All right, welcome everyone. I will call the March 16th, 2022 Commissioners Meeting to Order. It is great to see a full house. We are once again welcomed by our veteran and friend, Don Bradley, who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And also welcome back to Reverend Kevin Chively from St. Matthews Evangelical Lutheran Church, who will lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, just as for all.
Let us pray. God of all peoples, as we gather this morning, we give you thanks for the beauty of this day and for the freedoms that we enjoy in this land. And as we give you thanks for that freedom, oh Lord, we hold in our hearts and in our prayers the people of Ukraine, who are fighting for their very existence and freedom. Use us, oh God, to help them in any way. I ask you to bless the leaders of this county and of all governments and all people everywhere, that decisions that are made reflect your will and your justice and love for all. Bless these future leaders present here this morning, oh God. May they be nurtured and guided in their desire to serve people everywhere. Bring your healing, oh Lord, to those who continue to suffer from COVID. And help us all, oh God, to know your grace and your love and to give that grace.
Okay, if I could have item number two on the agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 2nd, 2022 Board of Commissioners Meeting as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. I'm going to open it up. Any public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to old business. Couldn't see you down there. If you could please state your name and municipality, and if you would just give me a moment. I have a little timer here.
Oh, don't worry.
Is it quick? Okay, because you're allowed up to three minutes, so.
Thanks. Phyllis Coster, Hellem Township. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to address the Love's Truck Stop that is proposed for the Kreitz Creek Interchange. I'd like to encourage you to refuse to grant a right-of-way through the Horn Farm Center for Agricultural Education for that proposed truck stop at the Kreitz Creek Interchange. There are many reasons why this is not an appropriate setting for a truck stop. I understand it has to be somewhere, but this is possibly the worst location we could think of. That area of Hellem Township has seen many, many flooding problems in the last several years. In 2018, 10 inches of rain fell in only a few hours, and that interchange flooded badly, mostly because of its proximity to the Kreitz Creek. The Kreitz Creek flows through the proposed site for the truck stop, and the amount of impermeable surface needed for a truck stop would exacerbate the flooding issue that already exists. Our unnamed tributary of the Kreitz Creek in Hellem Township, which was just a little trickle of stream, flooded during that event, and it turned into a raging torrent, carried away our bridge, widened the stream by six feet, and dropped the level of the stream bed by 18 inches. That wasn't the last time that it flooded. This is not a one-in-a-hundred-year event anymore. The Chesapeake Bay Foundation has ordered that Pennsylvania reduce the amount of sediment and pollution that flows into the Chesapeake Bay. We're obligated to do everything that we can to minimize the amount of stormwater that flows into the Kreitz Creek, which ultimately flows into the Susquehanna. The Horn Farm Center for Agricultural Education, which is adjacent to the proposed site, is a wonderful asset to York County and surrounding regions. With much wisdom and forethought, the county commissioners preserved that farm, at least 30 acres of it, to the Horn Farm for 99 years. The center has planted over 1,700 trees and shrubs to mitigate flooding on the farm and prevent water from flowing into the Kreitz Creek. They're being excellent stewards of the land. Putting a right-of-way for a sewer line through the fields of the center would be a terrible waste of the land and disallow them for using it for their least purposes. There are many excellent reasons for not allowing a right-of-way through the Horn Farm, which would allow the subsequent development of a truck stop in the interchange zone. The only people who would benefit from a truck stop at this location are the owners of the truck stop, the residents of Hellem and Hellem Township would pay the price.
Thank you. Sure, that'd be just fine. Sure. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, we will move on to old business.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Items below for the following departments: Children, Youth and Families, York County Planning Commission, and the Commissioners Office.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to new business. I need to ask for a motion to amend the agenda due to an emergency situation that has risen with the damage of a bridge that is in need of urgent repair. So if I could have a motion to amend the meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion.
And I'll read the motion.
Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to amend the motion, amend the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of amending the agenda signify by saying aye. Post, so we're going to amend the agenda, and we have a motion to.
I will make the motion. I'll make a motion to contract with JVI for the emergency repair work to Bridge Number 15 at Woodbine Road in Peach Bottom Township, which was damaged as a result of a vehicle accident and is currently closed to traffic until the guardrail repair can be completed. JVI has inspected the bridge and has indicated that the work will cost not to exceed $60,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries. And then we will move back to the preset agenda to item number one under motions.
I make a motion to approve the submission of a grant application on behalf of the Adult Probation Department to the Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $10,000 to provide training on the habilitation, excuse me, empowerment and accountability therapy, which is the HEAT program, which is designated to improve outcomes for racial and ethnic minorities in the adult drug court. Additionally, funding will be used to provide incentives for participants' attendance at HEAT sessions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries. I have number two.
I make a motion to approve a contract between the County of York on behalf of the Court Administration and Stenographer Elmhurst, Illinois, to provide 18 support agreements for Case Catalyst software at $689 per eKey, 18 CV net real-time licenses at $210 per license, and 19 Lumarex writer support agreements, basic loaner at $409 per purchased device for the period of March 24th, 2022 through March 23rd, 2023, for a total cost of $23,953.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries. I have number three.
I make a motion to approve a bid award between the County of York on behalf of the Sheriff's Office and X-ray Imaging Wyckoff, New Jersey, the lowest responsible bidder for the purchase of a THOTI RXR-3D-7 X-ray machine for the rear entrance of the Judicial Center for a cost of $45,655, budgeted for in the 2022 budget.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries. I have number four.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the York County Office of Emergency Management and Emergency Management Consulting, LLC, Hellertown, Pennsylvania, to complete the 2022 hazardous materials commodity flow study for a cost of $11,300.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries. I have number five.
I make a, I make a motion to ratify a contract between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and Lexus Nexus, Raleigh, North Carolina, to provide inmate LOL library hard drive access for a total cost of $1,291 and inmate LOL library online tablet access, $2,500, for the period of March 1st, 2022 to April 30th, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
And this actually was approved at the prison board as an extension, so we can continue to provide LOL services to our inmates.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries. I have number six.
I make a motion to approve the purchase between the County of York on behalf of the York County Prison and JWC Environmental, Santa Ana, California, to provide new cam cutters for the Muffin Monster, a grinder which grinds the trash before reaching the sewer line, for a total cost of $12,354.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? That is the actual name of the device. That's not a homegrown name. That is what it's called. If there's no further discussions, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries. I have number seven.
I make a motion to approve a non-binding letter of intent from the County of York to provide an allocation of funds to the Conservation Fund on behalf of the Susquehannan National Heritage Area Organization for the purchase of the historic Mifflin House property in the amount of $1.75 million. Such allocation will be included in a repayment plan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and I think we have one person that would like to speak. So let me get the timer. Eric, if you could make sure you pull the mic. Yeah. Okay, wait, wait. Okay.
Good morning. My name is Eric Memzer. I'm a resident of the City of York. I'm here today as the volunteer chairman of the Mifflin Site Task Force of the Susquehannan National Heritage Area, where I serve as vice chair of the board. You're considering participating in a landmark project for York County, a project that's a model for how public-private, multi-government cooperation should look. If you've been paying attention in York County for the last seven years, you've probably seen stories of controversy and conflict over the Mifflin property. Some think it's ideal for development. Others want to preserve it forever. This project resolves that conflict in a win-win manner. The Mifflin Site is 87 acres in Wrightsville Borough in Hellem Township, just off of Route 30. It includes a house built in about 1,800 that is a documented underground railroad site. It includes a site of a Civil War skirmish that just preceded the burning of the bridge between Wrightsville and Columbia. It includes a historic barn complex that typifies the industrious agriculture of York County. It includes beautiful hills that roll down to almost touch the Susquehannan River. The project you're asked to assist today resolves a long-running conflict over the site, bridges the gap between strict preservation and modern development, and brings York County a world-class destination that will promote investment in historic Wrightsville Borough and throughout York County. And it does it in a way that eventually returns the funds we're asking you to contribute to the taxpayers of York County. At the end of this month, the Susquehannan National Heritage Area, with its partners, intends to complete acquisition of the entire 87 acres as phase one of creating what we call the Susquehannan Discovery Center. We have commitments, including $3 million in RACP funds committed by Governor Wolf, another $1.5 million from DCNR, and private foundation support in York County, totaling $850,000. The item before you will complete that picture. Your investment in this project would be a generational accomplishment. This project is the best kind of economic development. It's good for the environment. It's good for the municipalities involved. It's good for local residents who enjoy recreation, history, art, and culture. It's good for attracting visitors to spend money in our economy. In short, it's good for the quality of life and the quality of place that makes York County special. Thanks.
Any other? You just state your name and your municipality, and let me restart the clock.
That's a fancy clock you have there.
I know, hey, well, at least we have this. It used to be this, so.
My name is Eric White. I'm borough councilman in Wrightsville Borough. And we're very big supporters of this project. We've been following along and working with them for a number of years. And it is a critical increase in our tax base if we can get that piece of property that's part of this developed in possibly a hotel, restaurant situation. Also, and I may be biased on this, since Wrightsville is the center of the universe, there's many pivotal points in history and the Civil War. I'm here with former councilman and historian Don Baer, who was also involved in this project from the beginning, supporting it. And I don't think, and the kids should know this, that had we not burned, had the bridge not been burned there between Wrightsville and Columbia, which we call the Wrightsville-Columbia Bridge, if that had not been burned, y'all might be speaking with a southern dialect. I mean, we stopped, we stopped the Southern Army there and turned them back to Gettysburg, where, of course, they were ultimately defeated. And had that not happened in Wrightsville, you know, things would be different. And that's where, that's where the Civil War is really pivotal. We've started a project in Wrightsville where we put several boards and education boards that you can stop along the Civil War Trail program. And this would be a really good focal point. It also fits into our Trails Town Initiative, where the trails come rapping, come rapping down from there. And it's just really kind of a binding piece for the area. And quite frankly, I don't, I don't, I think you guys will just invest the money in the Wrightsville and Hellem area rather than make it alone. But that's up to you. But that's, that's what those funds were for. Those funds were for parks and investments in the community. So again, I really hope you back the loan, but I encourage you to discuss investing the money in, you know, from that fund. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let me just stop the clock. Commissioner Hope, did you have anything to say?
No, I'm good.
Commissioner Smith, anything?
I do have a few comments that I'd like to share. I think the project's commendable. I'll certainly, I think it's a commendable project. The vision's commendable. However, I think that the county, county government has already clearly demonstrated its financial support to the Wrightsville-Hellem area. In 2020, through the Open Land Space Preservation Program, the county allocated $100,000 to the specific Mifflin House project. We followed that up in 2021 with a $150,000 grant to this project. So $250,000 from county funds to this project. In addition, in 2021, the county used federal pass-through dollars to give $400,000 to the Lancaster Conservancy, who supports both Lancaster Conservancy, but they support Lancaster and York County. We allocated $400,000 to the Camp Donegal Project, which is right in the same vicinity. So I think York County has financially supported that area of our community to the tune of $650,000. While those are two separate projects, they do have a common thread in preserving not only land, but history in the Hellem-Wrightsville area. Quite honestly, county government is not a lending institution. That's not our wheelhouse. We're not a bank. And I do not believe county government should be in the banking business. We, this is a loan. There's no repayment terms. There's no interest rate. None of that has yet to be identified. Last year, we had to make the very difficult decision of raising taxes this year. The Board of Commissioners made a conscious decision not to tap into our reserves to bridge the deficit gap. While this is only $1.75 million, that would require us to tap into our reserves. We have a strategic anchor called Fiscal Responsibility. And in my humble opinion, this does not align with the strategic anchor that the county has set forth. So with that, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. Commissioner Hope, yea or nay?
And I would like to make a few comments now. I think this motion reads at the beginning that this is a motion to approve a non-binding letter of intent. I understand that the loan will actually take place, if there is a loan or an allocation within a year, which we have a year then to discuss this. The allocation to repay the funding to the county, to me, was the key in this motion. We are not taking money from the ARPA funds. We're not taping money from the taxpayers. If money is allocated within the year, we will be repaid that money, which I think is an important part of this. So I will, in the roll call, I will support this motion. I think it was excellently stated by Eric and Chris that this project is very important. There was allocations for other open space. As a commissioner and the last Board of Commissioners, we allocated a tenth of a mil to go for open space, preservation of land. We have a farmland preservation program, so we have a lot of programs out there to provide allocation of money for this type of projects. And I'm proud of all the work we've done in York County to preserve land and history, because this historic site, Underground Railroad, is a very, very important site that, in my honest opinion and humble opinion, needs to be preserved.
So again, if I could call for a roll call vote, Commissioner Hope, yea or nay?
I will vote yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheeler is a nay. Motion passes. Item number eight.
I make a motion to approve the exoneration of 2022 York County Real Estate taxes on the following parcels in the face amount indicated for the property owned by the County of York and there is listed in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries. Item number nine.
I make a motion to approve a lease agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Parks Department and Terry Tryer for property adjacent to the York County Trail, located on Taylor Hill Court, Shusberry Township, to provide a picnicking and other recreational area for the public making use of the rail trail at no cost to the county.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries. I have number 10.
I make a motion to approve a permanent perpetual easement agreement between the County of York on behalf of the York County Parks Department and Paul and Suzanne Wilding for the construction and maintenance of an earthen pedestrian trail on a portion of the Wilding property located at 2770 Water Street, York Township, at no cost to the county.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries. I have number 11.
I make a motion to approve an amendment to a lease agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Facilities Management Department and the Trone Family Trust for the property located at 1,000 Carlisle Street, Suite 1,400, Hanover, PA, for the probation office in Hanover for an additional five years, starting at an annual base rent of $26,174.52 for the first year with additional operating expenses.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries. I have number 12.
I make a motion to approve an increase to the deferred compensation match equal to 50% of the first $5,000 contributed to the plan on an annual basis. The increase to be effective beginning with calendar year 2022 for all existing ineligible employees, with the exception of elected officials. The increase for elected officials shall be effective at the beginning of their successive term of office.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries. I have number 13.
I make a motion to approve a change order agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Facilities Management Department and Keller Contracting, LLC, York, Pennsylvania, for the plumbing portion of Phase 2 renovations of Pleasant Valley Road at a cost of $36,141, increasing the contract sum to $1,245,030.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Facilities Management Department and Verti Services, Inc., Columbus, Ohio, for the replacement of capacitors and fans at the two UPSs located at the Emergency Services Center for a total cost of $30,744.72.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item number fifteen.
I make a motion to approve a contract between the County of York on behalf of the York County Youth Development Center and the Cumberland County Children Youth Services to house Cumberland County juveniles for $375.60 per day at the YDC for the period of July 1st, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item number sixteen.
I make a motion to the submission of a grant application on behalf of the Office of Emergency Management and the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, to provide financial assistance for the hazardous materials response team through the local emergency planning committee for emergency response equipment and training needs for the period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Motion to approve tax refund register 2022-01 authorizing payment of York County real estate tax refunds totaling $195.60.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item number eighteen.
Motion to approve the weekly disbursements from the general fund for the week of March 9th, 2022 totaling $8,322,119.80.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item number nineteen.
Motion to approve the weekly disbursements from the general fund for the week of March 16th, 2022 totaling $9,444,077.26.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. We'll move on to resolutions.
Motion to adopt Resolution 2022-09 authorizing the filing of a Keystone Recreation Park and Conservation Fund grant application on behalf of the York County Library System for improvements to the physical facilities of the Gladfelter Memorial Library located in Spring Grove, PA, and authorizing Julie Wheeler, President, York County, York County Board of Commissioners, to be the official representative to execute all documents and agreements between York County and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to facilitate obtaining the requested grant and to provide additional information as may be required.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Resolution passes. On to appointments.
Motion to approve the appointment of Michael Miller as a member of the York County Uniform Code Board of Appeals for York County Planning Commission for a term of five years in the mechanical plumbing board position, March 16th, 2022 to March 15th, 2027.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Motion to approve the reappointment of the following York County Uniform Construction Code Board of Appeals members for the York County Planning Commission as listed below in the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. We'll go to executive sessions. We'll move on to other business. We do have a proclamation to read on behalf of National Social Worker Month. We have a lot of social workers here, right, in county government, whether in our Children, Youth and Families Organization, Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities, Area for Agencyal and Aging. So a special thank you to all of those county employees who serve in this capacity, but also a big thank you to all those people who serve in that capacity in York County. When we look at the Community Progress Council, the YWCA, there are so many organizations here in York County where individuals serve as social workers. So a heartfelt thanks from all of us. Commissioner Smith is now going to read the proclamation as soon as I pull it up here for him. Let me scroll down a little bit here. Okay.
Okay, this is proclamation for Social Work Month 2022. The time is right for social work. Whereas the social work profession for decades has been dedicated to improving human well-being and enhancing the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable among us, particularly during the global pandemic. And this year's Social Work Month theme, "The Time Is Right For Social Work," embodies how social workers rose to meet the most pressing challenges of all of our lifetimes. The COVID-19 pandemic, even as our nation continues to grapple with systemic racism, economic inequality, global warming, and other crises. And social workers are the largest group of mental health care providers in the United States and work daily to help people, whether in person or remotely, overcome substance abuse disorders and mental illnesses such as depression and anxiety. And social workers have always helped people overcome issues such as death and grief and helped people and communities recover from increasing natural disasters such as fires, hurricanes, earthquakes brought on by climate change. And social workers have helped this nation live up to its values by successfully advocating for equal rights for all, including Black, Indigenous, people of color, those who are LBG, LBG, TQA, and religious groups and others. And the social work profession is one of the fastest-growing careers in the United States with more than 715,000 social workers today and nearly 800,000 professionals expected to be employed as social workers by 2028. And whereas social workers have continued to push for changes that have made our society a better place to live, including a livable wage, improved workplace safety, and social safety net programs that help ameliorate poverty, hunger...
Sorry.
That's our...
This mouse is not behaving.
And homelessness. And the social workers possess the necessary expertise to assist our nation in some of its most demanding concerns, including their health and well-being, not only during the pandemic, but at all times ensuring equal rights, improved healthcare and mental healthcare for all, and immigration reform. And social workers work in all facets of our society to meet people, no matter their circumstances, and empower them to live to their fullest potential. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners of York County, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2022 as National Social Worker Month and call upon all citizens to join the National Association of Social Workers in the County of York in celebration and support of the social work profession, given this day in York, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, 16th Day of March, in the year of our Lord, 2022.
All right. Thank you. And our Director of Human Services is here to accept the proclamation. And Claire, if you want to say a few words, you're more than welcome to. Okay. Yep. Just make sure the mics.
Good morning. First, just thank you for taking the time to recognize the good work of all the social workers in York County and for those that work in human services. I can't think of a time, you know, in our recent history where we need their services more. Also, if anyone has an interest in serving others, helping others on a daily basis, please go to yorkcountypa.gov. We have a lot of positions open where you get to help make a positive difference in someone's life, and we will pay you to do it. So, thank you.
Go to yorkcountypa.gov. Jobs are posted. All right. We also are going to get an update from our friends at the Planning Commission on the Open Space Land Preservation Program. And I believe you're also going to give an update on the Marcella Shale process? Okay, fantastic. And I think you have a presentation, too. I'm happy to advance the slides, or you can...
I'll give it a try.
Okay.
So, good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Wade Gobrak with the York County Planning Commission and Ann Walco from the Planning Commission as well. We're here on behalf of the York County Open Space and Land Preservation Committee to provide an annual update on how the funds, the dedicated funds that were talked about earlier on, how those were used to preserve and protect property, natural areas, agricultural land, recreation land throughout York County.
I'll take care of it.
Thank you. So, we're in the second year of this program. This was started in 2019. The program was put in place in 2000. And again, last year in 2021 was our second year. And the goal of the program is to protect and preserve an average of 2,500 acres of land each year. And like I said, those are natural areas, those are agricultural lands, those are recreation lands. And that's done through coordination and collaboration between county departments, county-related agencies, municipalities, and local nonprofits. So it's been a great coordinated effort. You can see from 2010 to 2019, before the dedicated funds were put in place, we were protecting, preserving anywhere between 845 and 1,600 acres per year. Last year, we were up over 3,800 acres. This year, 2,126 acres were preserved and protected. You can see the pie chart shows the different agencies and partners that help protect that. We have the York County Agricultural Land Preservation Board, Farm and Natural Lands Trust of York County, York County Parks, the Grants Program, and there's also other properties that are protected through the subdivision land development process and municipal 2021 Partner Highlights, the York County Ag Land Preserve Board was able to preserve 15 working farms totaling 1,227 acres. I believe for this year, they're on track to preserve 16, close to 1,600 acres. The Farm and Natural Lands Trust of York County preserved eight properties in seven different municipalities, just under 600 acres. So it was a widespread, representing a large portion of, throughout York County. The Parks Department this year, two properties, one property adjacent to Nixon County Park, 7.8 acres there through the Grants Program. And they were also, there was a donated property, 23 acres next to John Rudy Park and the extension of the rail trail. York County Conservation District is also an important part to protecting York County. They had 117 ag ENS plans, erosion and sediment control plans totaling just under 6,000 acres. That's one of the requirements for a property to have those plans so they can be part of the County Ag Pres program. The York County Planning Commission, we help administer, facilitate meetings, create the program guidelines by oversight of the committee, and then give these annual updates every year. So those were the program highlights. I'm going to turn it over to Ann for the grant projects, but we had two new projects, two new grant-funded acquisition projects, two projects that were continued. Commissioner Wheeler recognized the Mifflin property, the open space, not including the buildings, there was funding given for that, 2020 and 2021. And we'd also have a regional planning project as well. So I'll turn it over to Ann.
Good morning. I'm here to talk to you today about those projects that we were able to fund through our grant program. So we can move on to the next slide and talk a little bit about the first project. This was a project in Franklintown Borough. It's the acquisition of 2.6 acres. And what the Borough plans to do with this, with this land, it's an extension of their current Archie Hess Memorial Park, which is in the Borough. It offers an area for residents and visitors to use the playground. There's a pavilion and a walking path. So this will extend the memorial park within the Borough and offer options for those who live close by. Our second acquisition project through the grant program was through the York County Parks, and it was an acquisition of 7.88 acres adjacent to Richard Nixon County Park, expanding, expanding the footprint of the county park. Park naturalists view that area as for future potential for environmental education, hiking, and a buffer for future development near the park. This project was a continuing project from last year, spoken of a couple times this morning, the Mifflin House Project, the Susquehanna Discovery Center. Funding for the open space program went to preserve the natural areas and land in that particular, in that particular project for future preserve and educational, environmental And the fourth acquisition project is a continuing project as well. It is in Spring Grove Borough. It is a total of 6.87 acres, and it's a unique parcel in the Borough, as is the last undeveloped parcel in the Borough. So it's adjacent to the high school, or adjacent to the school district building and the River Rock Academy. Future designs for the, for the, for the land include sports fields and just general green space for the residents of the Borough. We've also earmarked some funds through the grant program for planning projects, and this year we were in receipt of one application. It is to update the Southern York Regional Comprehensive Plan. The 500, or the $50,000 grant is for the partners of Shrewsbury Township, Shrewsbury Borough, Glen Rock Railroad, New Freedom, and the School, Southern York School District. They will be looking at their regional comprehensive plan and updating elements related to open space, land preservation, parks and rec, future land use, and the community outreach and education, outreach and engagement involved in that. So we were pleased to have those projects approved for this, for this past year. And I'll give an update on the projects we had in our first grant round. We were able to close out projects with the York County Rail Trail, which they were able to acquire 8.5 miles to extend the Hanover Trolley Trail in the area near Spring Grove Borough. And also, the Lancaster Conservancy was able to close on a property preserving 270 acres in natural state in Lower Chansford Township. I did mention the two continuing projects, the Spring Grove Borough Project and the Susquehanna National Heritage Area Project. They continue this year. And the two planning projects that were funded last year have made some pretty significant progress. The Dover Township Dover Borough worked, is working together to do an open space and recreation plan for both municipalities. They have awarded an RFP, and they have had their first meeting in February. West Mannheim Township is working on an implementable comprehensive plan, and they're planning to issue an RFP soon, and work will begin likely in the second quarter of this year. So very exciting land preservation work and planning work done with these grant funds. So I'm going to turn it back over to Wade to talk a little bit about the Marcella Shale funding and changes for that.
Thank you, Ann. And just to mention, those, those funds were matching funds, so the applicants were able to use that to leverage either state or other nonprofit funds for the program. I did want to mention, our current funds are for acquisition of open space or recreation or protect, to protect natural resources, or, as Ann had mentioned, the planning projects that support open space protection. New this year to the funding program is the Marcella Shale funding that we received through the county. We're planning to implement that into the application process and make those funds available the same way the acquisition and planning project funds are available. What this allows the programs to do, this is, complements our existing program very well. The eligible uses for the Marcella Shale funding include planning, acquisition, development, rehabilitation, and repair of greenways, recreational trails, open space, natural areas, community conservation and beautification projects, community and heritage parks, and water resource management. Funds may be used to acquire lands for recreational conservation purposes or lands damaged prone to drainage by storms or flooding. So it's a lot more that you can do with this funding, but it'll complement our existing program. And the timeline for these funds, for the grant funding program, the program announcement officially will come out in the summer of 2022. We've been hosting a grants workshop each year. That usually happens in mid to late August. The applications are due in early fall, and then the Open Space and Land Preservation Committee makes recommendations to the county commissioners in the December timeframe. And to find out that information, you can go to our website.
I'll check.
That has the information to apply for the funding, talks about the program. We, that's where we host the annual reports. This is our annual update, which we're required to give in our bylaws by the end of March. The actual report will be in there before the end of March, and a link will be on this website, so I invite you to check that out. Appreciate the Commissioners for, for the dedicated funds to preserve open space. We think this program goes a long way to further the county's purpose of strengthening the quality of life throughout York County. So thank you very much. Are there any questions?
I love that, strengthening the quality of life. Yeah.
Hey, for the, for the students, can you explain back in 2019 how we came up for the funding for the open space program?
Well, it was, action was taken in, in 2019, but it actually started in 2015. A group of, once we saw that we weren't reaching our benchmark for open space preservation, we got a group of stakeholders together, mostly the partners that I had talked about, along with the county commissioners and Mark Durr, and kind of started looking at the problem. The problem came down to dedicated funding. There was no dedicated funding. It would come in waves. We knew we needed dedicated funding to lay out a strategic plan to figure out how to protect and preserve the critical acreage. We came up with that plan, submitted it to the Commissioners, they backed it. There's a lot of analysis that goes into, okay, what's important to preserve, and is it for agricultural reasons, recreational reasons, or to protect our natural resources? We came up with, I think, over 85,000 acres that we identified that were important to preserve, and then came up with a plan to fund that and meet our benchmark goal that was laid out in our open space plan in 2006 of an average of 2,500 acres per year. With, in the, for the past two years since this program's been up and running, we have an average of just over 3,000 acres. So, so far, it's a success, and there's a lot of players involved, so I think, I want to thank all the partners that, and the Commissioners for, for making this happen.
Thank you.
Great. And thanks for your leadership on the Marcella Shale things. That was a process that, we did not have a very robust process in place on allocating those funds. So thank you for your leadership there.
Sure. Thank you. I think it'll be a great fit.
Okay. On, we have another piece of other business surrounding human trafficking, and we do have two special guests with us today. For those of you who may not recall, in January, the Commissioners did a proclamation acknowledging Human Trafficking Awareness Month. For those of you that aren't familiar with human trafficking, it does occur every day. It occurs in broad daylight. It's in plain sight. Sometimes you may not know exactly what you're seeing, but it is out there. This predominantly targets women and children, where human traffickers force or coerce their victims, often through violence, through violence and drug addiction, into labor or prostitution. The toll that it takes on its victims, their families, and a society as a whole is immeasurable. Unfortunately, York County has seen its share of human trafficking. Thanks to the agencies like the York YWCA and the York County Probation Department, the word is getting out, but there's much more work to be done in educating our community and eradicating this scourge on society. To that end, the YWCA and our probation department are hosting a seminar that's coming up in two weeks. It would be, it's going to be on March 31st. It's Human Trafficking for Law Enforcement. So law enforcement are those who are often the first to come in contact with victims and know what to look for and what questions to ask. So today, we're pleased to have Crystal Perry with the York YWCA. She is the Human Trafficking Advocacy Coordinator. And from the county, Abigail Runk, who is a Victim Restitution Officer for York County Juvenile Probation. So I thank you both for what you're doing, and if you'd like to come share a few words, we'd certainly love to hear from you.
Good morning, and I appreciate the opportunity to get the word out.
Great.
Um, as Commissioner Wheeler said, my name's Abby Runk. I'm the Victim Restitution Coordinator for York County Juvenile Probation, and I had the pleasure of actually sitting in on a seminar that Crystal provided a few weeks ago for some other members of law enforcement, and through that, thought it would be a great idea to offer it to our law enforcement and systems professionals here in the county. And let Crystal go over some of the more specific details, but generally, a lot of this is hidden in plain sight. And once you know about it, you can see it. So we have to learn what we're looking for, and... know about it, you can see it. So, we have to learn what we're looking for. And through giving these specific trainings to our law enforcement personnel is one of the first steps to get the information out there and get the education out there. So, we're very glad to be able to partner with the YWCA, with Crystal, to be able to offer this, this training to kind of get in on the ground level to start the educational process.
So, I've talked to you guys a few times. Can you hear me? Am I too tall?
That's great. Get, just get close to the mic.
So, I've talked to you, I've talked to you guys a few times about human trafficking. I started here two years ago. In my first year here, we did a lot of community education, the people that are being targeted. We wanted to educate the community. Then, we also partnered with Wellspan and UPMC to educate medical providers, because we know they come into contact with victims. This year, we're rolling out really getting involved with law enforcement and first responders. So, we've already trained all of the York City Fire Department, and so every firefighter knows what to look for when they're responding to a call. And now we're working with law enforcement. So, I'm very excited about this. This training was actually developed by law enforcement for law enforcement. They came and they trained our staff to give this training so that we can offer it free of charge to all of our local law enforcement agencies. And what we're doing, we at YWCA York, we know they don't work a normal Monday through Friday, nine to five. I have a much lack, much more lax schedule. So, I can offer this training in the evening. At the fire department, I would go in the evening and do it. I sat while they went out on a call and waited for them to come back. You know, it's that important that these first responders know what to look for, to ask these questions, and to identify, because we know how often they're coming in contact with victims, and it could be they're responding to a disturbance of the peace, and they don't, or a loitering, and they don't realize that this person is being forced to maybe, you know, steal food to eat that day, or other things. So, when you know what to look for and you know the questions to ask, that's the first start. And then if you're asking the questions as a direct, as a first responder, and you make that connection, you can call me or another agency and say, hey, listen, we identified this person. They need services. And then that's where we all come together and work together to help get people the services they need.
Great. Thank you both.
Thank you.
So, March 31st.
Very exciting.
Okay.
Any agencies, any law enforcement agencies can, outside the county, can just send me an email. Within the county also do.
What if someone has an interest in just learning a little bit more about it? Is that appropriate course for them to attend, or would you make another suggestion?
Yeah, that one's not, that one's more law enforcement. So, it's like what to look for if you're pulling someone over, if you attend this. I do have a community one. I've trained churches. The Diverse Community Group just invited me. I did their training. So, I do have a, a community one also. And also, if you're law enforcement and you're not available that day, you can reach out to me. Like I said, I will come to your police station, day, evening, whatever, and do that training just for them specifically, because we know not everybody can come on the 31st at this time.
Great. All right, thanks, ladies. The only other thing to add is the primary, as of now, is still May 17th. Nothing's changed. That's not to say it won't change, but it is still May 17th. And we have not received any final decision regarding the geographical alignments for the state representatives and state senators that are up for reelection. So, right now, we're just in a holding pattern. So, more to come. But, right now, we're still on for, for May 17th. Any public comment? I'll take another look so I don't miss anyone that's maybe short and I can't see. All right, if I could have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and I believe we are moving on to Salary Board. Yeah, I think we'll just pause for a minute as our young, future leaders depart, and then we'll...
Okay.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the March 2nd, 2022 Salary Board Meeting as submitted.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number two.
I make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements that were set forth in York County Employee Handbook, or York County Policy Manual for the following departments and row offices, as stated below, with no additional benefits or concessions as otherwise noted, and are listed in the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and Retirement Board.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting held on February 16th, 2022, as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number three.
Make a motion to include the following vested individuals on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. Janelle H. Eschbach, District Attorney, Catherine R. Ziegler, DJ Office Staff.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I'm number four.
Make a motion to include the following individuals on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. David C. Frye, Prison, Terry L. Henkst, DJ Office Staff, Leslie A. Lambert, Children and Youth, Children, or CYF, Kenneth F. Levick, Sheriffs, Arthur D. Smith, Jr., District Attorney, Jennifer J. Zen, Aging.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the updated Section 7 and 7A of the Buyback of Military Service Time Policy, as submitted for the Retirement Board's approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
There were no executive sessions?
So, just to clarify, I do believe we had an executive session related to personnel matters, so.
Oh, okay.
Just for the record. Okay. Any public comment? Hearing none. If I could have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, and looks like we have a Depository Board Agenda here.
I move to retain the following C.S. McKee account, with the requirement that all checks, drafts, or orders drawn against the foregoing account must be signed by the Commissioners, the Controller, and the Treasurer, and the account is the York County Capital Reserve account.
I'll second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And I move we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.